The January two thousand fourteen, two thousand, I'm sorry, the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five West Melbourne City Council meeting to order, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the city council, members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker card which are located near the glass doors and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments to the city council rather than individual members. Direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. All right, thank you. Okay, we have no modifications, we have no presentations, and we have no public hearings. We'll go right to the public forum. Again, persons wishing to speak must fill out a request to speak form and hand it to the city clerk. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, public forum will be limited to thirty minutes. Do we, public forum, the entire forum, if you have, yeah, if you have ten people, three minutes each, yes. Consent agenda, may I have a motion, I'm sorry, I'm going to get my light again here. Mr. Bentley.
Make a motion, we approve the regular city council minutes Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Motion Bentley, Ms. Adams.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Pat Bentley, and we have a second by Ms. Adams, all those in favor, please. Oh, Mr. Frantis, sorry.
Mr. Bentley made a motion to just approve the council minutes, is that, we're not approving all three things at one time?
Yes, we are, the entire consent agenda.
Is it, I just read number one, is what Steve was saying.
Okay, it's the entire consent agenda.
That's fine, I amended to do that.
And Ms. Adams, do you amend, yes, all right, thank you.
Because I only said A.
Thank you, thank you very much for catching that. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, please, nay? All right, motion carries, seven zero. All right, thank you. Action agenda, non-consent, appointees to the advisory board. Who's handling that?
I am.
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor.
Megan.
As you have seen in your agenda package, we have a, currently there's four vacancies to the business advisory board, and we have an application from Mr. Imran Mohammed, he provided his application, his experience is listed in his resume, which is attached to the item. He is currently serving on the West Melbourne Business Association Board, and he is a registered voter and a resident of the city, and this is up to the council's discretion whether or not they want to appoint him to the board. He is present in the audience, by the way, in case anyone has any questions.
He is the audience.
He is the audience tonight, in case anyone has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Odi.
Thank you. That is way in the back of my table. Mr. Frantis?
I'll make a motion, we accept Mr. Mohammed's appointment to the business advisory board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frantis makes a motion, do we have a second to the motion? Do we, Ms. Volz?
I have a second, but I have a question.
Yes, please ask your question.
It's said on here that he is a registered voter here, and he lives here, but does he have a business here?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because it just wasn't mentioned.
He's a notary.
Notary.
This is a notary.
Okay, and that was it, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
All right.
I just wanted to comment that I know he's very active in our, not only our business community, but in representing West Melbourne and other things, as mentioned, in his resume, so I thought that was great, and he had some great recommendations from the people that had recommended him, many of those names are familiar to many of us here on the council, so wanted to thank you, but also wanted to thank you for showing up and being our audience tonight, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, we have a motion from, I'm sorry, we have a motion from Mr. Frantis, we have a second from Ms. Volz, all those in favor of appointing Mr., all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you, next item is replacement of the sludge pump number one. Mr. Picarello, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, this is just another maintenance item down at the plant, facilities, we're looking to replace the second pump, which is a sludge pump, for the belt filter press, we replaced one last year, so this is the second one on the east side, there's two of them, and we're looking to replace it, obviously, with the same pump we purchased last year. We budgeted forty-one thousand dollars for this replacement pump, and it comes out to forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
All right, thank you, any questions, we have a motion to, I'm sorry, Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, I make a motion that we vote approval of pump number one for the Ray Bullard Water Reclamation Facility.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frantis.
I'll second one of that question.
And please ask your question.
Mark, there's only two, right, to that system?
There's three, there's east side, west side pump, which are identical, and then there's a center pump, that if one of those goes down, we could keep.
Are we looking to replace the center pump down the road?
Has been replaced also.
Oh, it's already.
Lasted a three.
Okay, great, how long are they supposed to last?
This one was two thousand and six.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, we have a motion from Mr. Bentley and a second from Mr. Frantis, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you, motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you. All right, the next item is the contract to award for the construction of our new RO water treatment plant.
So good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and happy new year, haven't seen you all since last year, I'm Mark Petroni, Capital Projects Manager, and we're here to discuss a very big pivotal and historical, at least to me, agenda item, which is the award of the contract for the construction of the new reverse osmosis water treatment plant. Little brief history, back in two thousand seventeen, questions and discussions were started with council and staff, as if this was even a possibility that the city of West Melbourne could produce and provide water to its residents, the council authorized the city manager at the time to advertise a request for qualifications for professional engineering services that would provide all the necessary data and information for the council to make an informed decision to see whether or not they would want to proceed forward with the development of the project. The decision at that time was put out, and if they were going to move forward with the project, they would need to make notice to the city of Melbourne by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, to opt out of the water agreement that they had, that would take effect December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So the RFQ went out, three proposals were received on December fifteenth, the selection committee met on the twenty-first, and ranked each of the three engineering firms based on their qualifications, experience, and ability to perform, with Hazen and Sawyer Engineering ranking the highest of the three. So right after the new year in January two thousand eighteen, the city authorized an approved Hazen and Sawyer to provide and prepare a water feasibility study, and hopefully to present the information to confirm that a new water treatment plant was truly possible, and then authorize the city manager to enter into a task order with Hazen and Sawyer, which was executed on April ninth, two thousand eighteen. Hazen conducted and started doing the study, provided an executive summary, and followed up with the final report that was accepted on October first, two thousand nineteen. Based on the findings of that report, the city council made the decision to proceed forward with the development of the water treatment plant, which basically embarked on this journey for water independence, which is why we're here tonight. Next, the site, the city council chose the site adjacent to and to the east of the current water treatment, wastewater treatment facility, and also authorized the city manager to enter an additional task orders with Hazen to keep moving forward the project. Next task order was for them to start the permitting services to apply and obtain a consultative use permit with the St. John's Water Management District to be able to access the Florida and Aquifer to provide the water source for the project. Also, part of that was to start and design a test production well, so we can achieve and receive water quality data that would enable us to determine which way to process the water from the treatment plant. It was also determined that we were going to need three additional production wells to provide the necessary amount of water for the new plant to meet our current and future demands, so the consultative use permit was applied for and got issued by St. John's in July of two thousand twenty-two, and they allowed for three, the three additional wells that were needed, and then they also required three monitoring wells to monitor the water quality as a condition of the permit. The council then authorized the city manager enter another task order for the design and permitting of all six wells, and that was put out to bid, award was given to AC Schultes back in October two thousand twenty-two. As work was progressing, on September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, the council then authorized the city manager into, which would be our task order number eight at the time, which was the permitting and construction and design for the new water, four million gallon a day reverse osmosis water treatment plant, and agreement for the task order was executed on October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. The three additional production wells and the three monitoring wells were completed, and the construction was completed in July of two thousand twenty-four, which brought four total production wells, each capable of producing a little over one point one million gallons a day of water. In October two thousand twenty-four, Hazen and Sawyer achieved a hundred percent design on the water treatment plant, presented all the necessary documents and bid documents, and I was able to put the new greenfield water treatment plant project out to bid on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Bids were due on December nineteenth, and we received two bids, TLC Diversified and one from Poole and Kent, with TLC presenting the lowest bid that you've seen in front of you. Both Hazen and I reviewed all the information that was presented in the bid, we checked the references, we talked to current customers, and based on all the verifications, Hazen and Sawyer was comfortable enough and drafted the letter of recommendation that's also attached to my report. From the fiscal standpoint associated with this project, TLC's bid obviously is below Poole and Kent's, it also is below what the estimated engineer, the probable cost, the estimated probable cost from the engineer provided, and it's in our budget. So based on everything that I have said, I am very proud to be able to recommend, as your capital project manager, capital projects manager, that you approve and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with TLC Diversified in an amount not to exceed forty-two million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and that amount does include a five percent owner's contingency of just under two point five million dollars. And as usual, I'll try and answer all and any questions you have.
Mr. Bentley.
I was just going to make a motion that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with TLC, in the amount I'm having not to exceed fifty-two million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
You said forty-something, though, but.
Yeah, you said forty-two.
So I thought, wow, he knows about something we don't, but I'm okay with it.
I think he accidentally said forty-two and change, it's fifty-two.
Fifty-two billion, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, okay, Ms. Adams?
I will second with questions.
Please ask your question.
Thank you, okay. In terms of TLC, I know that they came below for, for the two bids that came in, but I was trying to do research on them, and I saw them in a couple places around Florida, but do we know generally how many water plants they have experienced with building?
Through the research that Hazen and I found, they are currently doing a four million, almost identical water treatment plant on Stock Island down in Key West. The gentleman, that's my counterpart, from the Florida Keys Aqueduct Authority contacted me, prior to the bids coming out, and did express he was very happy with them, and was hoping that they did not get the award here, because they're going to be building another four point, four million gallons a day plant in Marathon. When we called him back and he followed us up, you know, he saw the bids came in, we went over all the pluses and minuses about them, and he had nothing but good things to say about them. Now, they're not, I will say, to, I think what you're concerned is going, they're not as big as the other contracting company, but sometimes bigger, you don't get the service he's dealing, we're dealing with the actual owner of the company, I think they're a lot hungrier, they are having enough financial horsepower to get the job done, and I think they're looking to really try and make an impact, and this project would be really good for us and them at the same time, so.
Okay, that's good to know. The original expected cost was around the ballpark of, you know, we were looking at thirty, rather than, you know, the almost fifty we're looking at now. I know that with inflation and with the higher costs post-COVID, that's not entirely a surprise, but do we have a plan, or do we not need a plan if costs go over this amount?
Well, the, when this all started, when I came on board, the first size of this plant was approximately two point two to two point five million gallons a day, which that thirty million dollars, I believe, represents. As the studies started coming in, the growth potential of what we're going to be in the next fifteen to twenty years, reaching a maximum population, that was up to the four point, the four point oh or maybe gallons a day, four million gallons a day, which basically is doubling the size of the plant. So that's where I believe most of the cost have come into. Now, we've been spending a lot of time, our team, countless hours, we've gone back, I've played and argued with architects and engineers, and have this actually come in below where they originally started to where we're at today, I think is a really positive feat and a really good thing, but that's pretty much, I think, what was the main issue. much, I think, what was the main issue, you know, as far as what the main cost difference was, was the size of the plant doubling. The owner's contingency of two point, just under $2.5 million, I think is a pretty good buffer, too, because I think we've got all of our i's dotted, t's crossed, that there shouldn't be anything that really is going to come back and bite us, that would cause a huge, for me to have to come back and go, uh-oh, we need another big chunk of change.
Okay. In terms of oversight and quality control, I would expect that from a staff perspective, we're going to have eyes on this regularly as it's moving forward in the building phases. What's the plan for that in terms of their quality control versus our side of quality control?
Well, everything has to go through the engineer record, which is Hazen and Sawyer, so they're going to be putting eyes on it. We have sent over the building plan itself, I believe, over to Universal Engineering that does our reviews, and they'll have eyes on it. We have our city inspectors, we have myself, and we have them, and the building department to make sure everything is done. So, between a whole big group of set of eyes, we should hopefully keep the quality control to where it's got to be. It's all got to pass tests, too, at the end of the day at the same time.
Understood, and I know, you know, we'll be bringing on the water plant director, and part of that was hoping that they'd be on for this whole process to see it from start to finish, so I hope that's coming along soon. If we have, and I'm going to say poor weather, because I'm going to not say, you know, what could potentially happen later on in the year, I feel like that's just bad, we're not going to put that into words, but if we do have some poor weather and a particular season impacts the construction, will we still be on track for meeting our water plant deadlines in terms of the timeline? I know since we gave Melbourne notice and we have a date that this has to happen and be online, do we have a contingency plan if weather puts us back behind schedule?
Depends on how bad the weather is, right? I don't know if it's a, if it's a total devastation, and it's a very bad storm that's going to impact everybody, I guess we're going to have to cross that bridge when we get there. I know you ask me that a lot of times in all these other projects, and it's hard to predict what Mother Nature is going to throw at us.
You should bring your Cristobal.
Yeah, that's, that's been broke a couple times, right?
But, I mean, What's the plan, though, if we get, if we get a bad storm, and this puts us up maybe a few weeks, maybe a month or two behind schedule, we have a date that, you know, we're not, we're no longer in contract with the city of Melbourne, do we have the opportunity to extend that as needed?
Yeah, we'll be working with both Melbourne and Palm Bay, we have both interconnects, obviously active, as that is, as the primary option. Additionally, all, all utilities are controlled by the district, right? So, the district doesn't, doesn't let two feuding communities, you know, turn the water off because there's a, there's a feud. So, there's a public, public safety and a public health aspect that the district oversees, and so there, you know, I'm very confident that between Melbourne and Palm Bay, you know, if, if something were to happen, and probably not so much with the site, but if something were to happen that would, you know, cause supply chain challenges, I, you know, we'll be in good shape to, we're going to, we're going to always have water. We might have to pay a little bit more for it once it's past the contract date, but at the end of the day, we'll, we'll, we'll have water for our residents. There won't be a day where somebody turns on the tap and we go, oh, we're almost done, we're working on it, we're almost done. And additionally, you know, Mark and the team, Mark's done a great job, Mark Picorillo as well, Tom Bradford, Candace, you know, everybody, this has been a, just a tremendous lift. I, I can't emphasize the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of small decisions and, and process and cost analysts and, and, you know, reaching out to other utilities and getting, you know, different perspectives that, that have gone into this process, and so we think, we think we're going to have an amazing water plant. But one of those things that we identified early and this council took action on was those long lead times for, for any of the, the challenging items, and the two, the only two items that are supply chain issues were those, the switchgear and the generator, and that we've already purchased and, and is in process. And so, that was one of the, you know, items that we mitigated our project by, by getting those long lead times to make sure that we had them ready to go.
Understood. I think this is going to be a great project for the city. I think we're going to offer better quality water for our residents, so I think it's definitely worthwhile. I just want to make sure we have all of our t's crossed in terms of a just-in-case plan, since I know you have in your office that lovely countdown timer, and I see it regularly, I think it's going to start appearing in my dreams.
It's ticking every day.
And we also put a couple months of fluff, I guess, just for that contingency, too, into the timetable in the event this happens, so that gives us time for testing if there is a delay. Hopefully, everything will fall into place.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Frampton?
Are you saying we're having disputes among our neighbors?
No, no.
Just checking.
No.
Couple questions. The, quite a big difference between number five on the page C5 on this site, site civil work, it's like a four mil, or three million dollar difference, is there any reason, do we know why, or are they just punching in numbers to?
Well, if you look at the bids and you compare line, out of the line item, you'll see some completely ridiculous, some very close, and I just believe it's the, the way for the company to fluff up one, meet the requirements for the other one, because some of them make sense, some of them don't.
So to say, I just want to make sure, I mean, we're not going to have some kind of civil site work that's going to overrun there or something that one guy didn't realize. I, I can't imagine what.
We've done all the geo, we've poked 22 holes into the ground, there should be nothing that we know that's not in the ground, it's, it's a clear, open site, no trees really need to be cleared. I don't know why that number came in high, but then they came in super low.
On some.
Look at some other items.
I saw that, but they're still.
Other one being a million dollar delta, too, so it's.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Well, I'm more, I worry more about the low number of the 6,000 for other, other things, because that seems to be surprisingly low. The owner contingency, that's overrun, right? Is that what that's for?
That, that would be if something does come back to unforeseen, which is really the big word in construction, that we don't know. Like I just said, we've, we've tested unforeseen would be, God forbid, there was hazardous waste, something that would drive up the cost of this that nobody knew about. We put the owner contingencies in all of our contracts, so I don't necessarily have to come back in front of you all the time to do a change order if it was required.
We use most of that up, or could?
We have not, to be honest with you.
Two point five million less, I'm guessing?
I, I would surely hope that we don't even have to tap into that, the way this has been priced out on all the other projects that I've been in front of you on. I don't think we've even gone into it, it's just a figure that's there as an insurance type of insurance policy for us in case something does happen, and we never have to use it.
This 52 million plus, does this include the, the feeds from the pumps that run into the lines, or did we approve something different for that?
No, we have two other projects, one that just came out of the bid Friday, which is the well development projects for all the, the six production, or the.
That's what we, we approved that earlier, right?
Correct, everything's been budgeted, yeah. This is just for the water treatment plant.
So, what's the final cost of the water treatment plant when you add in all the pumps and all the other things we approved?
We're, we're just under 80 million.
Eighty million.
So, wells, we're, the next council meeting, we'll be bringing the well housings forward, that's the bid that Capital Projects Manager Petroni just mentioned. That came in really good, under budget. This Friday, we had that bid opening at two, two ten, and so that one came in, so that'll come to the next council meeting. And then our last item is the conveyance lines to and from, so running, we need to run conveyance lines from the well site to get the water to the plant, and then, once we make the water, we need to get that water back out to the distribution lines. And that, that's out to bid now and should be back here.
February 7th.
So, so that'll probably be the second meeting in February, that'll be one of the last pieces of the project. But this, this 52 and change is, is the site. So, the, the conveyance line contract will actually bring, the one, bring in the water.
We didn't approve that one yet.
That, that, that hasn't come, that's, that's out to bid right now, the conveyance line.
What was the bond for, how much?
The, the total bond proceeds were 54, and again, we're using part cash and part bond to pay for the, the entire project.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frampton. Ms. Volts?
Yeah, I was wondering, I was wondering, did something happen with the city of Melbourne that caused our water bills to go up?
Probably us leaving.
So, so Melbourne, we, we, we took action, oh, boy, that's a little over a year ago. This council took action to increase our water rates when Melbourne increased their rates, and we did a pass-through. Whatever the increase was for the charge, we passed that along to the residents. So, we didn't add any, and we didn't eat any, we just, whatever that increase was, we, we carried that forward. And so, that's the last, yeah, that's the last, that's the last time we've touched the, the, the rates.
Well, I was just wondering, my, my bill has gone up like almost 20 bucks the last couple of months.
Using more water.
But, well, I guess.
We'd be happy to look into that.
Well, I guess maybe I'm washing my hands a lot because I'm making a lot of cookies and candy.
There you go, we.
That might be it, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the garbage rate has not changed since we redid the waste management contract, the water and sewer rate.
Uh-oh.
And this is, is hopping.
Yes.
Our finance director is hopping to the podium.
She literally hopped.
When we, when we did the approval for the increase, it was a two-part increase. There was the initial increase that was effective August 1st of 23, that was around 14% on average, and then there was a follow-up increase that was effective October 1st of 24, which was an additional 8%. So, that is probably the additional increase you're seeing, and that was all based off of Melbourne's plan and their pass-through. So, it was a two-part.
So, but we're happy to look if, you know, one thing we do, one thing, the water utility and the finance director who oversees water billing, what we do very well is if somebody calls with an unusual bill, we're, we're happy to try to help them, certainly identify a leak. We do, and again, this is just kind of a public service announcement, so, you know, forgive me for this, but, you know, toilets, toilets are the number one cause of increased water bills. You know, rings around, some of the gaskets in your toilet wear out and will cause a toilet, especially one that doesn't get used a lot, will cause a toilet to leak water every day. And so, we do, we do have some magic blue dye that you can put in your, in your toilet bowl, and if you wake up the next.
Where can we get it?
Right, right at, I'm, I'm happy to get you one, but they are, they're on the counter, at the front counter at City Hall at the utility billing, and if you put it in and, and wake up the next morning and your, your toilet bowl is blue, then your toilet's leaking, and, and that's, that's usually one of the biggest, you know, culprits to, to larger water bills.
Okay, then the question, the next question I have is, are our water rates going to stay the same as the city of Melbourne had?
That's a phenomenal question, and, and I'm very glad you asked it because I'm very proud to answer that question, so.
Okay.
So, one of the founding principles of us doing water in West Melbourne was that we did not want to carry any extra burden to our customers with the new water plant. And so, a founding principle that myself and Tom Bradford and, and Finance Director Blake and Mark Picorillo and Mark Petroni, what, what we, what you hear me say very often through this process is that we promised not to raise the water rates to build this plant. And that's, you know, when we've gone through the bonding process and had the third-party, Stantec was here and presented the third-party analysis of the water rate, what we call the water rate case study, all of that has shown that this, this is, right now, it's fully funded without any additional rate payer dollars, and so, not, not having to raise, raise the water or sewer rates in order to pay for this project. Now, the one thing that we do not control between today and January 1st of 27, for the next two years, the one thing we don't control is what Melbourne charges for water. And so, what, what I said when Melbourne raised their water rates last time is what I would say if they did that again, which is, you know, we have traditionally been transparent with those increases. If, if we get, if, if Melbourne charges 5% more for water, we've passed that along to our customers, and, but we'd have to evaluate that when that happens, but that's the one element for the next two years that we just do not control.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Volts. Any, do not have any more lights on, any more comments before we take the vote. All right, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Bentley, we have a second by Ms. Adams. All those in favor of awarding the contract to TLC Diversified in the amount not to exceed $52,484,250, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Petroni. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, we can move on to council reports. Austin Gaylord.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Alexis McGuire?
Um, so, I think last week I attended the, yeah, it was last week. So, last week was the Palm Bay luncheon as well as the Melbourne Regional Chamber breakfast. The luncheon, we heard from the sheriff, who talked about kind of the crime rate, and then informed us of the opening of the new veterinarian clinic that's going to be opening for their care of all of their animals. For those of you that don't know, currently, they're doing all of their surgeries in a center that's probably about the size of a fourth of this room. All of their surgeries are done in that center, and they're going to be opening a state-of-the-art facility that I believe is opening in February. I marked the date on my calendar, but I don't have it easily available. But they are going to be releasing more information on that for us, for us to attend. And then, we also had the Melbourne breakfast, where we heard from an economist, who, long story short, basically was talking about how inflation rates are here to stay at probably around 3% to 5%. The US economy is still the best economy in the world right now, but that, you know, the federal government is deficit spending, which is abnormal unless we're in war or a pandemic, that rent prices keep increasing, which is locking younger generations out of being able to purchase homes, and while larger corporations are seeing their prices or their profits increasing, smaller businesses are still in tight monetary constraints. But that was kind of the general gist of what we learned at that breakfast, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton. All right, Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. I did want to note, because it was brought up at the League of Cities last night, that Indian Harbor Beach had lost a council member who passed away, Hamilton Boone, about a week or so ago, so just wanted to share that for those of you who may have known him. And I also wanted to recognize our own Rusty Mel, he is a West Melbourne business owner, many of you know him through the different advisory boards and leadership roles that he serves on. He was just elected to be the 2025 Space Coast Association of Realtors President, which is exciting for him, and he has also been recognized as this year's EDC Volunteer of the Year. So, he's going to be recognized at the upcoming annual meeting, but just wanted to recognize him since I know he does a lot for businesses in West Melbourne. Additionally, these, in terms of the Space Coast League of Cities, the Florida League is hosting Legislative Action Days, which is going to be March 24th to 26th in Tallahassee. So, registration has already opened for the league, but just looping everyone in. And then, from an advocacy perspective, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation is having their kind of countywide meeting, and that's going to be on January 29th up in Cocoa. For those of you who have not attended before, it's a great opportunity if you want to go to not only hear the other speakers, but Mayor Young, I think, I was shared that you're going to be speaking. And so, if you want to speak, the deadline to register is on the 22nd, so heads up, it's going to be here soon. But even if you choose not to speak on a topic that you feel is important, I think it's also, you know, I know a few of us have attended in the past to be there and listen to the different civic and community groups that present on items that are important to them. They advocate, you know, for our legislators in terms of projects or things that they have coming forward for the year. So, it just is an interesting pulse point for, from the countywide perspective, especially since here on the south end, I feel like we probably know more about what's happening on our end of the county, and it's always nice to kind of get more people in the room and hear what's happening. And it's always nice to kind of get more people in the room and hear what's happening, you know, from north to south. So I wanted to share about those dates for anyone who wanted to attend or if you're interested in speaking. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
What is the date on the, on the, what do you call it? The last one that you just mentioned.
The legislative meeting, the twenty-ninth?
It's the twenty-ninth. Was that one this early in the morning or?
That is three-thirty to. Three-thirty to about six. The first segment's going to be remarks from different registered speakers and then the, the delegates themselves. And then that second section is going to be come at five-thirty. And that's going to be other speakers and local bill proposals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Volts, it's your turn.
No, we just wanted to say Happy New Year and Merry Christmas to everybody and hope you all enjoyed your candy. Oh, sorry, I didn't have my microphone on there. And hope you all had great holidays. And I think that was, that was it. I was, everything was pretty mundane. Besides me having practically raw hands from washing my hands so much, that's probably why my water bill was high. Literally, I mean, I wash my hands probably at, at least every two to three minutes instead of licking my fingers. And they're like, oh, now I got to wash my hands, you know? So, anyway, I just wanted to assure everybody that you all got really clean, good candy.
All right, thank you, Ms. Volts. Deputy Mayor Pat Bentley?
No report, Mayor.
All right, and I as well have no report. Management reports?
Just, just to echo Councilwoman Volts in cleanliness, City Hall, like many, many of businesses and, and, you know, schools and everything, we're experiencing a high rate of illness. And so in Wisconsin, we used to call it the creeping crud, runs through the office and keeps running through the office. And we're kind of experiencing that at, at, at West Melbourne right now. So we're.
Mr. Carey spoke that?
I, was that a motion? So we're, we're continuing to work through that. Certainly no interruption in service, not, not to that extent, but it's lots of, lots of sniffles and, and dark offices and trying to get people to take care of themselves so we can get through this. So just wanted to make that aware. And then a couple of ribbon cuttings and events coming up. I, I know our clerk has done a great job getting those meeting invites out, but it seems like we've, we've got a, just a bunch of them here coming up in the next couple of weeks. And we're excited for that. And then looking forward to the council retreat, not this Saturday, but the Saturday after. And so looking, looking forward to that. And then happy to take any questions.
Anyone have a question for? No? Yes, Ms. Adams?
I just had a quick question on the process with the water development or water director.
So, great question. So after our, our last process, we regrouped and went back to the marketplace and had another outstanding candidate pool narrowed down to four. And so we're taking that four down to two and should have an announcement here pretty soon.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Were you going to make a comment regarding fire hydrants?
Oh, you know, relative to the incident in, in California, and I know Florida's had a history with some wildfires as well. But I just want to assure the, the public that I did have to ask because I wasn't sure exactly how many hydrants we had. But I, I was informed by our, our Public Works Director that we have about twelve-hundred. I was going to say twelve thousand, and I'm thinking, whoa. It's like in front of, one in front of everybody's house. Twelve-hundred fire hydrants in the beautiful city of West Melbourne. We are not a big city that has a laundry list of hydrants that need to be repaired. We, we have a very aggressive public, water department crew. If a hydrant does go out of service, and, and they do, unfortunately, people hit them. But they also do fail from time to time. We do get those back in service, usually within twenty-four hours of them going down. And so it's very rare for us to have a hydrant that is out of service for longer than twenty-four hours. We do flush and maintain each hydrant every year. So every year it does go through a flushing and a, and a maintenance as well as a testing. And so, you know, one of the joys of being a, a good-sized community like ours is we have the staff to do that. We're not too big that it's this overwhelming task that they never get to. And so I would never compare us to L.A. County. You know, different scale, but we certainly do a really good job here. And we'll continue to do a good job maintaining those and understanding how important they are. And so we wanted everybody to know that that's something that we take very serious and. And, and we, it's funny you say that. We can put a hydrant together faster than Melbourne. So officially, it was proven in, in a contest. We could do it faster than, than Melbourne. So, but, but it, it is a serious topic, and you don't, you don't think much about it until something like this happens. And it's, it's good to know that. I just wanted to ensure everybody that we're, we've got a great crew in there on it.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Carey?
Just wanted to give you all an update real quick on one of the litigation items that I had emailed you about at the end of last month. We had the hearing on it on Friday, and this, so far I'm batting a thousand in litigation for the city. Haven't had any losses yet. This one, I, I thought could have gone either way, but we got a judgment in our favor. And so all that's left now is to get the final judgment filed, and we'll have another forfeiture taken care of. So just wanted to give you an update on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments for the good of the order? All right, we will adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.